Meeting to order, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Muller. Trustee Hulshausser.
Present.
Trustee Schaller.
Yeah.
Trustee Mason.
Present.
Trustee Reinders.
Present.
Trustee Lepore.
Present.
Mayor Nitske Troyke. Present. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment for this evening? Okay, assuming that there's none, we're going to move on to item E. Dunn Farm Property, I'm sorry, Dunn Farm Hickory Grove Workshop, proposed residential development on approximately 116.89 acres, including 51 single-family homes, 61 duplex townhomes, 11 quadruplex townhomes, total of 217 dwelling units, and a commercial component along 159th Street on approximately 16.86 acres. Do we have the petitioner here this evening? Hello. Do you guys like to step on up?
George Arnold, the attorney on behalf of the developer for Dunn Farm, and I just really want to introduce Nick Patera, who's going to give you your presentation as to the development. Thanks.
Scott Schreiner, our engineer is also here.
I could have done that, but thanks, George. So my name's Nick Patera, my company's Tesco Associates, we're located at 627 Grove Street in Evanston. We've been working on this property with, I'm going to call it some evolutions of plans for no less than about two years. It's a special piece of property, but what we have done in this time is continued refinements to the development property based on input. We've had two or three workshops prior to this, informally, in the other room next door. We've gotten input from neighbors at times having to do with road connections specifically to Isbrook, to the west of us. But what we're looking at is 136 acres of property. It presently has a farm on the northeast corner on 159th called Hickory Grove. Sometimes you'll hear this property referred to as Hickory Grove or Dunn Farm, but the Hickory Grove Farm, if you were to drive back in there, is all part of a 40-acre parcel that we're going to be dedicating to the village. That's shown in green on the right-hand side of your screen. And that 40 acres contains the farm at the north end, some bluish areas which will be generally dry detention, but then also there's quite extensive woods and wetland in that. And what we envision that to be is once dedicated as an asset to the village, walking trails, the farm, there's been a number of discussions about what to do with it, but that hasn't really been part of the purview of what we're here tonight to talk about, although that's part of the, I'll call it, the continued dedication. When we started planning this property, we envisioned this to be a comprehensive neighborhood. The front 20-acre, you can see kind of a domino-shaped rectangle, top-left corner of your screens, if you're all looking at the screens, I guess. The, that's a 20-acre reserve piece for commercial, but that's along 159th. Within that piece, there's a grayish IDOT-owned parcel. When IDOT widened 159th, they obtained from the property the acreage that you'll see that we're kind of working around. But one of the objectives for the bigger picture of the remainder of the property was how do we get down into the core of the property and then still have access from 159th, but not feel like you're driving through rows and rows of parking? So we did lay out a schematic idea that you'll see here for the commercial. Again, that's just a vision idea to show the access road that's coming in from 159th down into the core of our property to serve the residential. We don't, at this point, it's premature to say, are we going to have a grocery store here? Are we going to have outlots? But that's what's been shown. But what we really were aiming to do is to get a nice drive that's coming through from 159th, bypassing the commercial area and entering into what I call the loop road. There's a circumfential road that wraps around the residential and then goes down to 164th Street. Earlier plans, if any of you were around, looked at connecting 164th to 159th with a straightaway, and it would just been a buzz-through road. We really didn't want to do that. I think we want to try and allow people to drive through here, but keep it calm and keep it accessible, but not make it a shortcut between 159th, 164th. So that's what that circumfential road is an organizer, it's somewhat of a theme element. And so when you're entering in those stems from 159th or 164th, what you're going to see is not a garage door, but you're coming and looking at open space at the core of the development. And so the colors that you're seeing on that plan, this lightest yellow kind of butter color at the south side, that's separated from the more darker yellow mustard color, that's multifamily to the north, and to the south, the light yellow color is single-family residential. The diagonal bisect that you're seeing going through there is part of the open space, but it's a gas pipeline existing that runs through the property. And we didn't want to just turn our backs to it, but say, this could be something that looks like it's part of the open space, and unless you knew there was a gas pipeline underneath there, it's going to be integrated into the core open space that we have on the property. The open space altogether, we can get into numbers, I'm just trying to give you an overview so far. All the roads that we have in here, on the top left where the mustard-type color is, that's townhome development. These are all dedicated, built-to-village standards roads. Earlier plans that we had did not have that. On the top right, there's townhomes, I'm sorry, there's duplex attached, single-family, two-family duplex. And then the single-family is that lighter butter-yellow type color. What you're seeing is threads of open space that are dividing up these parcels. Within those open space areas, we have trail network that connects to the public sidewalks. So where we have public right-ofways, there'll be city sidewalks that are along the public right-ofways, but then when there's crossings of the open space, we've picked that up with connector roads. I don't know who's running the show with the images.
So I've got some other slides here.
Can you go to the next? I'm just going to give them a little bit more detail, then we can go back to you, Chair, with any questions. The, if you would like, I can tell you that right now, we've actually started in 2023. Is this the earlier plan?
This is 2023.
23. That 23 plan was basically 253 dwelling units. I'm not going to smudge you with numbers, I can come back to it. But what you're going to see is a reduction of numbers as we go through this to meet with the zoning ordinance and also to kind of zero in on the market. If you go to the next one, Chris, it goes, that's a November 24 date on that plan, the previous was 23, so we're kind of hitting these fall '23, '24. And this, that one went from 253 down to 241, and I can give you the breakdowns if you need that. And then finally, just to move ahead, this is the current plan. And so what we've done is gone from 253 to 241 to 217 is the now current plan. What that 217 does is, you know, drops the overall density, and there's numerous ways to calculate the density, either with or without the green deed-restricted area, and I can also get back into that if you like. But with the 217, what we have are 44 townhomes, and we went to 122 of the duplex, so we've gone up with the duplex. The single-family has always, that yellow butter color that I mentioned, has always held at 51 homes, 51 lots in that. What this plan does at this point is at the top, kind of the top-right of the yellow color area, if you go, Chris, maybe it has a better enlargement to the next. This plan shows the entrance coming in from 163rd, and what I had said, when you're coming in, what we try and do is to have those entrance roads broken up so that they don't look like, they're public roads, but they have a nice curve to them before they hit the circumfential collector road, and that they do, when they hit a T at that circumfential road, they have green space at the T. So like I said, you're not looking into somebody's garage door, you're looking into green space beyond. But then you're seeing, these are the townhomes in the kind of butterscotch color, the greenway of the gas line you can see is integrated into the green space. And then the single-family homes, nearly every one of them, the rear yards open up into open space. And these are all elements of conservation-type development, that we're not having backyards knocking into backyards. There's always a buffer, even from 164th Street. Go to the next one if you would. This is the, predominantly the top-right corner of this site plan, if you remember a minute ago. The dedicated roads, the loop that feeds this, these are all the duplex homes. Again, they're all looking out into greenway and open space. The internal loop that you're seeing there previously had been a private road, we've converted that to all dedicated public right-ofway with sidewalks on that internal road. So there's been a number of evolutions to these plans. On the top right, at the, like, 11 or the 1 o'clock position on this circumfential road, I'll show you in a minute, that's our neighborhood amenity for the residents, and there will be parking spaces there off-street, and then a pavilion, a dog park, and a couple pickleball courts, and an open concrete area that you could have games, bags, that type of thing. I think I have an enlargement a little bit later. Chris, you can go to the next, please. This is, what you're seeing are the townhomes on the top, top edge of this, that are, there's a buffer or a berm that would be anticipating the future commercial development that I mentioned on the 20 acres to the north, and that the townhomes would be looking at a landscaped berm rather than the back end of a grocery store, if that happened to be what it is. And then these also on the interior loop are, were townhomes that we've now converted to duplex. So it's kind of transitioning from the commercial area, if you recall the big picture, then it goes to townhome, then it goes to duplex, and then the gas pipeline, and then the single-family. That bluish color at the end of the road, I believe that's Isbrook Extended but not Connected. That's a play area that we have, just as a general playground. Again, it's owned and managed by the HOA, just like all the rest of the open space in here. The only thing that would be managed by the village is the once-dedicated 40-acre piece to the Far East, but everything internal to the development would be managed by the homeowners association. If, Chris, go to the next, thank you. That's that upper-right corner, the area where we have parking spaces for residents, that you could have a trail up to the farm parcel from there. There's no prohibition that says that you can't walk back and forth between city and private, but the bluish areas are pickleball, there's a pavilion in there, fenced dog-run park-type area, and some paved area for games and gatherings. So that's right between the duplex residential at that location, if you go to the next. That's that playground area, a little bit fuzzy, but a sidewalk going around the bluish area would be this resilient surfacing and then play equipment. One of the objectives of the village was to have that so it's upbutting a public right-ofway. Previous plans had it tucked in and internalized into the internal open space area, but what we did is made it so it's visible, accessible, but not right up against the road, so that kids and families could see it and reach it. It's not something that's a regional scale, it's not something that we felt, it was something that we would feel we would walk to as a location. Therefore, we're not showing parking, that would be an overkill in my mind. To the next, I might be getting close. On the homes, some of the pictures that I had shown you, I kind of glazed over those, and we can come back, but the single-family, the duplex, and the townhomes all have attractive facades. One of the things that you should hear us say is the townhomes have been laid out with front-loaded doors, front doors facing the street. So in other words, you're not walking, you're not seeing just garage doors on our internal roads, and you're having to walk around the backside to get to a front door. The front doors would actually be on the street side, so it has a human presence on the front door, and it's not just auto-only with garage doors going up and down, that's all you see. The building materials that we're showing here are the shingles siding, roofing materials, gutters, and trim that are all high-quality materials. That would be something that would be reviewed by the village as we got into more architectural specifics. I might be getting close to the end on this, see what you have, this next one, Chris. These were, important for you to see this, but these entrances, the one on the bottom and the top, the bottom picture is coming in from 159th, and one of the objectives from the workshops that we had was to make sure that commercial traffic, whether it's truck deliveries, what people who are up in the 20-acre commercial parcel know clearly as a direction that they're entering into a residential district. So you're not going to have somebody who's dropping off a semi-load of fresh produce up at the grocery store, getting tangled up in the neighborhood without realizing, oh, you're coming into a special place. So the idea of having a boulevard, some pavement treatment, coming through landscape and berm says, you know, intuitively, that you're, don't have to just say signs, you know, no commercial trucks, you know, no thoroughfare. That was happening both on 164th and the extended 159th entrance with fencing and signage, gateway pillars, as a landscape treatment. Chris, what do you have left? Back to the, back to where we were. So this is the current plan, and I think I wanted just to kind of restate the refinements that have been done on this plan have to do with the density, lowering the density down to 217 units, providing still amenities with the resident recreation areas, the playgrounds. One thing that you can't see too easily on this, but on the far-left side, Isbrook was a concern. We could connect to Isbrook, but what we have gotten back to is not connecting to Isbrook other than having the potential for an emergency vehicle access. We've talked to public safety, and for emergency vehicles, we're showing a cul-de-sac at that stub of Isbrook rather than connecting through. The residents of Evelyn's Gate and on Isbrook really were in favor of what this is, is turnaround with a cul-de-sac, which works for us as well as for the public safety and streets operations without having to connect and have a thoroughfare connecting to Isbrook. So we still have two connections, one south, one north, 59th and 164th. I think that that kind of covers, I can get back down to overall densities and such as, what this, what this kind of nets out at is that if we finally start to get down into the specifics, and that Chris may want to cover some of this, is the, there's two different zoning designations, R6A and R3A. We are allowed, when the R6A, a density of six DU's per acre, we're at 5.78, so we're below the six number with 5.78. For the R3 area, R3A, we are allowed DU's per acre, 72.58 is allowed based on the open space, we're at 51. So this, neither, none of the residential units are at the point where they're maxing out or asking for relief or variance on the densities or the capacity of the property.
Mr. Peter, I just wanted to know, we have a hard stop at 6:30.
Okay. I'm kind of close. I think the only other numbers, and I really apologize, I don't want to mix you up with numbers, but the open space areas, we're required to have 20% open space. We're actually right on the brink of having 50%. It's 49.7% open space. So that's, that was the theme all the way from 2023, and we've kind of been able to maintain a lot of the framework and a lot of the neighborhood objectives based on input that we've received from the village. So, I don't know, Chris, if you had comments that you wanted to?
No, I think it might be beneficial if it's just more back and forth with the trustees at this point, and then I can answer any questions myself also.
I'm sorry, I have a tickle in my throat, and I don't know what's going on, but does any of the trustees want to start? Trustee Lepore, since you're on the Economic Development Committee, would you like to go first?
Yeah, so as far as the commercial development up front, there is nothing that's currently in place as far as that. We're just talking about the residential and the rear lots, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Short answer. We've had people tap on our shoulders, asking questions about the commercial, but we said, let's get through the village first.
Very good. Thank you.
Trustee Reinders.
One of the concerns I have is that at the plant commission level, I know that they made a recommendation to limit the amount of townhouses that was in this development. And I actually see that the townhouse, the four-unit?
The four-unit count was at 100 on the first plan, 104 on the second plan, and now we're down to 44. So it's going?
But I realized that the plant commission was, oh, sorry. I realized that the plant commission was totally against the townhouses, and asked that they be replaced with duplexes, regardless of whether there's going to be a berm there or not. Whomever is going to be facing that berm, whether it's, it doesn't really make a difference whether it's a townhouse, first-facing commercial, or a duplex. So, and I think the recommendation of the plant commission was to replace those with duplexes. So that was one of my concerns. My other concern is that the park donation, that land that's up in the front, closest to 159th Street, is that the land that you were talking about?
It's the entire east side, so everything you see is an emerald-green color on the east side, so it's, yes, it's up front, and it continues all the way down to 164th. It's 40 acres.
And mostly it's unusable land, though. That's basically a wetland from, probably from where you're talking about, where your center is going to be all the way back, is basically wetlands.
There's a combination of wetland, there's a combination of stormwater, and there's a combination of woods.
Right, so that's basically unusable land for us.
The woods could be used, we didn't use it, it's deed-restricted.
Okay.
Trustee Muller.
Trustee Reinders hit on one of the points I did about the 40 acres of unusable. Two things, would that, obviously gifted to us, there's every, all the maintenance along with the ponds and everything would fall on us, correct?
That's correct, and that has been a concern.
And then the, the open space you talked about, the 20% required, where you're at nearly 50, does that include the 40 acres that you're gifting to the village?
There's two different, just a minute. It's, I need Scott, the open space, I didn't get through all my numbers. There's, we've done it both ways. The net open space excluding the deed-restricted area, is that something you?
It's, so the 20% is based on 75 acres. I'm sorry, 133.76 acres. So it's the full property, so it includes the 40.
But if we exclude the 40, you've got that in there.
I have that in the density here. I could calculate real quick, I don't have that calc on my sheet.
Let us get some answers for you.
Okay, and then, do you have a projected price range low to high of, low for the quadplexes to your highest of the, of the single-family?
I don't, market value, it's not something I have answers for, sorry.
Trustee Hulshausser.
I think all the other trustees have answered my questions.
Trustee Mason.
I think this is, I've been watching this develop, and I think this is probably the best rendition I've seen. I do like that the berm is going in, I like that you kept the conservation in mind while doing it. I think the new renditions and the keeping the open spaces when 20% was required, and you're at 49% right now, is a plus. When I look at, and I read through this all today, and I've been staying on top of it because I live next door, but the number of duplexes and quadplexes have fluctuated over the time from 253 down to 217, and I think that's what Trustee Reinders was indicating, that we were trying to tighten up the density, and I did notice that too, and you've covered all this already, but it looks like an R6A that we require six dwellings per unit, and you're approximately down to about 2.85, so less than three units per acre. I do like the way that you moved the entrance on 159th Street to meet the middle of the median, so easier access in and out, so I think that was very smart on your part. I, I do like, I just, I like, I like this rendition a lot better. I think you've taken in account all of the requirements from the various meetings, and I believe there were about six of them, starting back in '22. So I think you've done a good job. I know you've reduced the size of some of those single-family homes too on the, on the one end of it, and I think you're keeping, again, the conservation in mind with the trees, although you do have a good point, Trustee Reinders, the land that you were dedicating to the village, I know it very well. You have the farm there, just to the south of the farm, heading towards Stone Bridge Park, it's a little woodland, and then from there back, pretty much is wetlands. And I see that, I read in here that you were going to do stone or gravel, or maybe a sandy path. I'm wondering, if you end up in that wetlands, can it be an elevated platform such as a wooden dock area to get through because of water being held at times?
It's a nice idea that hasn't really been explored. I like those boardwalk pathways.
Yeah, a boardwalk-type thing, exactly. That would be real nice.
We haven't gotten into that in the, especially in the deed-restricted area.
Right. I just know that, I'm also a hunter, so at certain times I walk fields, I look, I pay attention to what's around me, I look at the geography of the land, and again, going south from probably approximately lined up with Stone Bridge all the way to 163rd Street is all wetland at that point, but that's also where you plan on doing your mitigation, so.
A little of both, and so part of the restoration work around those stormwater basins would be wetland-type planting, so it would, it would still have habitat created with what we're proposing.
I like the way you did that boulevard too, and the, it looks like the entrance to the subdivision itself from off of 159th Street, you have that road going in there, and you've done some, looks like pavers-type entrance going in there. That's very nice, and it's similar to Evelyn's Gate.
Subject to village approval.
Subject to a village approval is correct.
Yeah.
So, but thank you very much.
Trustee Schaller.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe all the trustees have weighed in on everything that I was looking at, especially Trustee Muller here with the percentage of open space. Once that's figured out, I think that's the most important thing.
So I got that number for you. So we did it two different ways. We've got a gross open space, and then we got it just for the residential portion of the property. So for the gross open space, 26.75 acres would be required, and we've got 66.61, which does include the deed-restricted parcel, which is approximately 40 acres. So if you took that off, it would be there.
Right, at the 26.
About the exact same number as required. When you look at the residential portion, at 20%, it's at 15.23 acres required, and we're providing 26.33 acres, which is about 35% open space in the residential. we're providing 26.33 acres, which is about 35% open space in the residential.
I do have a couple of questions. This development seems like it's been going on a lot longer than '22. I feel like this has been going on for quite some time. I remember being a clerk and hearing about this project. Just a couple of things. I know that a traffic study was conducted, and I know it's very detailed, and I remember reading that, that the development at the 159th, once the commercial portion is put in, there would need to be a traffic signal, correct? Is that guaranteed by IDOT that they will put that in?
The answer from, if I was wearing an IDOT hat and combs and jacket, it would be, it's subject to a warrant, meaning how much traffic does it generate? If there was to be a through road, I would say that that would start to trigger that type of a warrant, if that was, be a connection to the north at some day. We've shown at least the provision at the break in the median, and we've shown a deceleration lane that's the eastbound that you're able to pull out of the flow of traffic to turn right and come in, but we haven't advocated, we don't know that we have the warrant to justify a traffic signal, but it's set up with that anticipation.
Yeah, I don't, just to be upfront, I don't have a problem with the development itself. I know some, the planning commission and trustee Reinders had stated about the townhomes and the amount, I think if you were going to put townhomes in, that's a perfect location, backed up to commercial corridor, or commercial area, and then on the other side, I believe you're backed right up to the other commercial, which is Denoful. So I don't see a problem with any of that, but I do, what I was saying is, we have a, we have a hard time getting development along 159th Street, and I just don't want any more holdups, so if we're going to be promised some sort of commercial down the road, I don't want to later hear, well, we couldn't get the traffic light, or we couldn't get the deceleration lane turning into the commercial, and that's why we can't get the development for the commercial. The other question I have with that is, we looked at 159th Street, but what happens on 163rd Street? There, you know, was there a study done on the amount of traffic that comes off of 163rd? I lived right in that home, right in the area that's grayed out over here, and I remember it was very hard to get off on Cedar Road because of the traffic backup on Cedar Road. Is there any word on that?
The traffic report that has been submitted was probably for the higher number density, the 241 or 253. We haven't done it for the, updated it for the 217. There wasn't anticipation of any, the need to make any improvements, and I misstated 163rd earlier.
That's okay, I knew what you meant.
Thank you. But there wasn't a concern on the traffic report for that. There was something else I was going to say about traffic.
Because I do remember back in the day when this came up, that was a huge concern with the residents that lived there, not just the residents in Evelyn's Gate, but also the ones that live in?
Evergreen.
Evergreen, and then also the residents who live in, on the Lockport side as well, because that is, that is a problem area, and when we had spoke to the county, the county said there is a county road right there, so the rough cost, I think, for that light was over a million dollars, and it's a, it's a one lane each way. It was, it was an issue for those residents to live, that lived there to get in and out. And my concern is, if you live in this subdivision, and you want to head to south, you want to head towards Lockport, you want to head towards Joliet, those, all of those residents are going to come out right onto 163rd Street, and that's going to create a traffic drag. Now, they're not going to go out to 159th, cross over that traffic, go left, and then come back down, so the amount of homes that you're putting in here is not necessarily a problem to me. The concern is the traffic on that road.
So I think that the traffic report, we'd have to address that.
Yeah, so that's one concern. I haven't, I didn't see that anywhere in here at all for 163rd. I saw 163rd, but I didn't see the 163rd side of it. The other question is, I saw something in here about the school districts. It's a lot of homes to be put in there, again, not a problem, but have we touched base with the school districts on, you know, the impact on the schools? I know that they get an impact fee, but what about, because I know when we had other developments come in, 33C, I think a representative from 33C came and said, you know, we're busting at the seams as it is, how many children are projected to go into this subdivision? Granted, you don't have a crystal ball to say how many children are going to move in, but have you talked to the school district at all about this?
No, I think one of the things that would come out of the workshop, and as we get further kind of commitment both ways from the village, it would be to look at school impact as well as a fiscal impact, of what municipal services would be required compared to what kind of property tax revenue you would gain from this. So I think that those, those are good points, school and both village fiscal.
Uh-oh, you got the big guy coming up behind you. Oh, here we go. I'm kidding.
It has been a while, but maybe, Joe, maybe you remember, but we did have the meeting where all representatives from the different, you know, interested parties came, and one was the school district. I think we did that twice, and if I recall, they didn't have any issues per se with this.
Right, but that was back in '23, I believe they came, but since then, we've had other developments come after you, and they then said it was a problem, so I'm just curious if what happened from the last time you were here to the other developments. So I was just curious if, you know, not just 33, but 205 as well, yes?
Excuse me, may I jump in just real quick?
Sure, of course.
So this was, so this was shopped out to the school district. We didn't receive any comments with?
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, with the latest plans, so sorry about that. Regarding the, this traffic signal on 159th, that would be warranted, our understanding is when the commercial is developed, that signal goes in. The right turn lane immediately goes in at the beginning of the development.
Right, we all know how IDOT works, though, so I'm just curious if, if that's going to be a hangup in the development of the commercial, you know?
Well, yeah, to your point with that.
So we have it guaranteed that it will happen if the commercial goes in, or when the commercial goes in, right? When the commercial goes in, yep.
Right, yeah, with IDOT, with these four proposed access points, they are aware of the plans, but they obviously haven't given any preapproval for them.
And what about the 163rd side?
That's not IDOT, but I'm not sure.
County.
Yeah, right, no word from the county about that.
Yeah, because I actually have more concern on the 163rd side of things than 159th Street, which is a concern, so I'd like to have some feedback on that. And again, I'm not opposed to this development, I just want to make sure that this isn't impacting the already existing residents that we already have. I do love the fact, I'm going to say some positive things, that you are doing this as an association, and it's your own park, and that the village will receive a nice donation, a nice park donation, so that is, that is flattering to us as well. I think that was all the questions I, oh, and then I saw some renderings of the styles of homes in this packet. Is that the actual renderings of the development that you're planning on doing?
Those are prototypes. We thought that what we wanted to, short answer, no, those aren't the specific ones. We had not, this is not set up with a builder specific yet.
So our understanding is that any builder that comes in here would have to go before the board and the village and get approval for what they want to build there. So that's an example of what we envisioned, but, you know, that could change based on whoever comes, but our expectation is that they have to come here, you know, before the village and get, and get that approval, so.
Right, and I understand this is a workshop, and we don't want you to spend any money or any further funding on projects and give you false hope. It is, it is my opinion that I would like to see more of the brick on the homes, you know, kind of mimicking the surrounding area as well, so that's my personal opinion. I know that they do have to go back before the board, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that prior to. I'm going to go back around to the board, and is anybody else have anything to add? I know we have a hard stop at 6:30, so, no, no, no? Hi, friends, you guys have anything?
Yeah.
Trustee Laporte.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor, Mayor. Question regarding, back to the commercial front, I know you guys aren't developing that right now, but outside of putting that access road in, is there anything else being done to the commercial?
Thank you. At least what we've shown, in addition to, you know, building and parking, you know, what that little plan is, is basically a balance of square footage of prospective buildings. Some are outlaw-type, you know, frontage on 159th, some are internal, that might be medical or professional, some might even be grocery. These are, you know, proposal, and we have stormwater in there. But we do have, on the west side of 159th, at the commercial, a right in and right out, and the same thing happens on the east side of the commercial, a right in, right out. And what you'd see if you studied that plan is kind of a back road, so to speak, like a service road that wraps around it. So what we're trying to do is to really make it so it's a nice entrance for our residential that also serves the commercial, but the commercial can function independent of that primary entrance coming in off of one, the middle entrance off of 159th.
Okay. And outside of these roads you're putting in, is there anything else cleared, or are you guys kind of leaving everything else untapped as far as, or anything developed? Not developed per se, but just the roads only, everything else?
The primary road, the center spine road that connects to my circle?
Understood.
Would be the road that goes in.
And the surrounding residents, just for the record, have had their input and had their say, that's why the Innis Brook is now a cul-de-sac. Trustee Pasquale, did you have anything you wanted to add? I mean, what did I call him? I meant village attorney.
That's okay.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Yeah, just, just real quick, sir, the quadruplex units and the duplex units, are those going to be sold to individual builders as well, or are those going to be constructed by you and your team?
No, the current plan is for them to be sold to builders as well.
Okay, so the entire, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. And trustee Port, I think we, and maybe you were not asking this, but in case you were, when they do the, you know, grade the residential part, they would mass grade and grade the commercial, and the idea would be to have those pad ready. So I don't know if that, so there would be an improvement in that sense there, in addition to the road, so those would, the intention would be to have those pad ready for commercial to come in.
And retention ponds as well, or?
Yes.
I had one question. The right ins and the right outs, the access, those will accommodate semi-traffic as well? So when trucks come in?
Yes.
So, right, to keep them off the main road as much as possible?
That's the idea.
Just for a clarification question, because I believe attorney Pasquale and trustee Reinders is asking, when, when the question was asked about the duplexes and the townhomes, you're not individually selling each little four-pack, it's going to be one big development, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Can I add something?
My view of confused.
The question about the balance on the single-family duplex townhome, we really didn't want to end up having this just one monotiffic kind of product type. We really wanted to have diversity built into this, and so that is why we kept some of the townhouses at the top left corner. They were previously on the top right corner as well, but we just didn't want to end up saying this is all one, one single-family development or one, you know, single-family and duplex. We really wanted to say there's an opportunity for multiple price points.
Go ahead.
Just a follow-up, sir, so the entirety of the duplex units that are shown here, all of those in total are planned to be sold to one specific builder to construct these?
That would be the, that would be the intention. The intention is not to sell like an individual pad to an individual builder and have them all built separate, it would be to be to one. Now, we don't have somebody, so I mean, it's possible, I guess, that that one could become two, but it's definitely not to say, you know, get 50 different builders building 50 different, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think, do you have anything else to add?
Only, and I don't know if this will help or not, but just in terms of the history of that 40 acres, and I understand, you know, what happened before doesn't necessarily matter, but it might help just in terms of having the history. So, you know, just, I think 20 years ago, back when Russ Patrizio was still the mayor, when we bought this property, or my client did, it was kind of with, we bought it from Frank Dunn, but with consultation from the village of, hey, you know, we'll keep this 40 acres, and Frank, Mr. Dunn was very excited about that, hey, maybe they'll want to preserve the barn and so forth, but the idea and the way it's written in the restriction is, it was always intended to be able to use, use for the development of this property, but just not build homes in it. It was always supposed to be, and it says it right in there, you can use it for retention and all that stuff, it's supposed to be, you know, going to the village, and, you know, at that time, they were thinking of like having a working farm and that kind of stuff, so it, you know, I just want you to have that for your benefit. That was always the intention, and that was what, that was the reason that was done. At that time, the village was very excited, oh, it'd be great, we'd have, you know, 40 acres would be fantastic, but it was always going to be used, trustee Reinders, as detention for this development, and I believe that's specifically written in that, that fine deed restriction language that I drafted 20 years ago.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to add? Oh, Mr. Grubba?
If I may.
Sure.
Just a couple of things that I think we would help staff and the developer to discuss. One that trustee Reinders touched on was the existence of the quadruplexes. If that's a nonstarter, I think it would be helpful to know at this point now before this goes to a public hearing, and the planning commission doesn't act on that, and it's forwarded to the board, and the board has no appetite for quadruplexes. The second thing is, is how much parkland is the village considering to accept all 40 acres, only the required six acres or five acres, or one acre, and then ask for another, the cash, the balance in cash? That would really help to firm up these plans if there's any, you know?
Trustee Reinders can respond.
So at this point, Stonebridge Park is located very close to this development, and with, with the intent of them putting a smaller park within the development itself, at this time, we feel that we don't really need any land or any of the 40 acres, or any of the land up in the front, that we would recommend taking the park donation.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Consensus on that to the board?
Yes.
Okay, so there's that answer. I think the other question was the duplexes.
The quadruplex.
The quadruplexes, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any hesitation or concerns of the quadruplexes?
I know it's early on, but a lot of this is going to be aesthetics, like, a lot of residents are not big on multifamily in Homer Glen, and I think if, if done properly, they'd be, have a bigger, better appetite. I know it's early in the game to have a development or have an actual sketch of something, but it's, it's the toughest sell, what you're doing in here is going to be the quadruplexes for the other Homer residents, but I know it's a car before the horse kind of thing here, but that's, that's the biggest concern for me in this area is would be the quads. Outside the commercial development, which I know we covered.
That would be my concern as well. I really actually believe that that second, that second section across the street from where the commercial is, is if they could eliminate those and put duplexes there, I think I would feel more comfortable.
I agree also. Is, residents are pretty vocal towards us that density is an issue, so if those quadruplexes could go away, I think that would be a much easier pill to swallow.
So I've been asking questions, and I asked it of Taylor earlier today, and I think you and myself and the mayor had talked about this. We are bound by the Illinois Housing Authority Act, when we own state roads or have ramps going to 355, or 159th Street is put in, and it's a state road, that you have to have a certain density. And although we don't like that, we also need growth, and we need growth down 159th Street, and in order to get commercial growth, you need to have residents. With that being said, when this doesn't stress, and I know too, because I'm on safety, that it wasn't stressing fire, it wasn't stressing school, I think this is very beautiful rendition. Like I said, keeping the conservation in mind and having all this open green spaces, I think the way it's been tucked in in the berms and stuff like that. I have two young, I don't want to say children, because they're men, but I see a lot of families that want to stay in Homer Glen or are coming back, they've lived in the city, and now they want to move back, they want a little peace and quiet and some of that rural atmosphere. And the younger guy can't afford the median home price in Homer Glen at this point, and I mean, my children live nearby, I'm very fortunate, but I'm sure there's a lot of people that can't afford to come back, and I think this helps us meet quotas that the state of Illinois has been pressing us for over the last 20 years, that we've done almost zero about in the last 10 years.
With that being said, though, you do have to remember the development that was just put on, in Old Oak, you had the Marth properties, they had duplex self for over $900,000, so that, that's actually not the median of the road there either, so it all depends on what the aesthetics are, you know, what the development looks like and so forth. I mean, I always compare everything to Stonebridge, a lot of people were angry, or Evelyn's Gate North. I remember there was the biggest uproar of the highest density, and there was, residents all packed the room, and, but yet now it's one of the most sought-after subdivisions in Homer Glen, so it all depends on what you put in there, I guess? The style, the aesthetics, and, you know, and what's on the inside as well, so we're, I mean, I know that you guys are proposing to take out that second row, which would mean, I think it would be eight of the, it would be eight of the quadruplexes, right? Four, it'd be four of the buildings itself, and then putting in four duplexes. Is that something that you can finagle in there? That's what they're, that's what they're requesting.
I think, preliminarily, I think Nick is indicating that wouldn't fit, but certainly we under, we hear your feedback and we appreciate it, and it's certainly something we can, you know, look at, so.
Okay, great, all right. Trustee Laporte.
One last question on the quads. What's, do you know the approximate square footage of those, how many bedrooms would be in those units?
Probably two, three-bedroom is what I'm guessing, somewhere in the upper teens, 1,800 square feet.
So three-bedroom, you said?
That's what I'm, this is.
Preliminary. Yeah, okay, just, just turnover and size is, yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing these thoughts with us.
Thanks, thanks for your feedback, too.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.